Some reason I have two Commissioner Harding.
Did I?
Well, Sam, you can only vote once.
I could, and we have a missing member, but I think the second one that doesn't have anyone there, I think that's due.
I think that's due.
Ah, sorry, I think I mislabeled, sorry.
Well, I'll go ahead and then open up the Design Review Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 2nd. Let's see who we have to establish a quorum. I know Commissioner Bishop is not here. But if we can go down the list and say aye if you're here. Sam Harding?
Here.
Michael Ma?
Yeah.
Jude Kerik, who I think is still muted. Sean, do you have control over?
Sean, you are muted too.
Yeah. I'm unmuted myself.
Jude, you're here?
I'm here.
Okay, so we, so we have four, so we do have a quorum. First item is public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have, Sean, anybody in the meeting who has a comment that's not on our agenda?
I have not been advised, but is, is there any member of the public who would like to speak regarding an item that is not on the agenda tonight? If so, please advise us. Not hearing any, we, we, we're not aware of anyone wishing to speak for an item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to consent calendar. And look at the Design Review Commission meeting minutes from our last meeting on the 19th. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved what?
To adopt the-
To approve the meeting?
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do the vote on it. Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
Commissioner Kerik?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus, aye as well, so 4:02 approved minutes of January 19th meeting. Now, we have discussion item number two for the property at 959 Altis Oaks Drive. Item SC 21-0023. Steven, do you have a report on that?
I do, just checking to make sure you can hear me.
Yep.
Okay, and then I'm going to turn on my video because I still have some technical problems with my computer. If I share my screen and video at the same time, it just kills it. Give me one second while I get in my screen sharing. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble getting back to the application here. That just I lost, okay, here we go. Can you see the slide now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, just went a little sideways there. Okay, so this is a design review application for a new two-story residence. The project includes 2,733 square foot first story and 987 square foot second story for a total floor area of 3,720 square feet. The subject property is located on the north side of Altis Oaks Drive and west of Miramonte Avenue. And this is the heritage, Heritage Oaks Park. This neighborhood is best defined as a consistent character neighborhood according to the city's residential design guidelines. We made that determination based on the fact that most of the residences in this area are single-story. They have low scale horizontal roofies and gable or hip roofs. Most of these residences have consistent front yard setbacks with garages facing the street. And there's kind of a very fairly consistent style of sort of the ranch, typical ranch style of Los Altos. There has been some residences in this area that have gone through modifications and additions over the years. But, but a lot of the, a lot of the residences here have kind of retained that, that ranch style character. Roof forms, massing, and the types of, of materials. And then similarly, the properties directly to the rear of the subject site on Linda Vista Way share a lot of the similarities with the properties along Altis Oaks Drive. I won't get into a whole lot with regards to sort of the, the neighborhood outreach plan that the, that the applicant completed. They, they are going to go into detail, but I just wanted to show you that the surrounding houses are mostly single-story with two, two-story houses on that cul-de-sac of Linda Vista Way to the rear of the property. With regards to the overall site on the screen right now is a site plan and the proposed the proposed setbacks for, for the structure. Again, they're gonna, they're proposing to demolish the existing structure. And the proposed residence is two-story with an attached garage. The driveway will remain in the same location. And the proposed building footprint will either maintain or increase the current setbacks that exist. And then along the left side of the, of the, along the left property line, the setback is actually increasing from 12 and a half feet to 16 and a half feet. Whereas you're aware that 10 feet is required. That extra four feet of that left side setback does give more, more room for the two existing oak trees that are located there, which is of course a good thing. The proposed front and rear setbacks are also increasing as compared to the existing setbacks. And they are conforming with the zoning district standards. With regards to the actual design of the structure, it has a modern prairie architectural style. It does have low-scale three and 12 pitch roofs that kind of have these layered hip roof forms with standing seam metal roofing material. There is a lot of, a good degree of articulation in the building form with portions of the second story recess further back from the, from pretty much all the facades, but definitely on the first, the, the front facade and the, the side-facing elements that you see from the street. There is a proposed stone veneer water table which creates a base and breaks up the first story massing along with eve lines, again, breaking up the vertical planes that you see in the front elevation. The stone veneer is also accented on vertical portions of the building. And there's redwood siding which further break down the structure into smaller forms. I did discuss in the agenda report that this design is a result of some modifications that the applicant went through. We expressed some concern regarding the stairway element, which is to the left of the, the front entry in the slide. It had a more of a, a two-story element. And it could have been perceived as, as a more vertical appearance with, with more bulk, which is generally not supported in the residential design guidelines. And so as a result of our, of our feedback, the applicant revised the design. It has this more sort of downwards sloping roof in the front. Again, it's above that, that downward face, that downward sloping roof is above the front entry and to the left of the front entry primarily at that stairway. It does reduce the vertical appearance and some of the bulk. But as again pointed out in the gender report, it, it's probably doesn't integrate as well as that hip roof and that hip, that rhythm that the hip roof structure creates. So just wanted to point that out. Also, as you can see on the right side, the, the second story of the right, of the right side, there is a sliding encroachment into the daylight plane. But we would consider this what's, what we call a de minimis or a less than significant impact. It's, it's really probably the roofing material and maybe a little inches of the gutter. So it's really not enough to, to make a big deal, deal out of with, with, with that impact. Again, something that we pointed out in the agenda report, the wall plate heights at the first story is, is, is sorry, is, is 10 feet. And except for the left side of the building that has a 10 and a half foot wall plate height. And that's in the, the living room area of the, of the first story. Again, this was something that we addressed with the applicant. And the, and this is the result of reducing the wall plate heights, which were even higher before. But based on some of the previous Design Review Commission direction and consistent with this neighborhood, which does have fairly low scale and low scale structures and lower wall plate heights, we are recommending a further reduction to the wall plate height to be more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It probably would also address the, that, that slight daylight plain encroachment on the right-hand side. Again, that it's not a, that daylight plane issue is not a big one, but, but the scale of the, on the, the wall plate heights of the first story is one that we raised a bit of concern about. Just real quickly, the right side elevation, you can see they're only proposing two windows at the second story with five-foot sill heights. And then along the le, left side elevation, again, there's only one small window with a sill height of six feet. And we don't, we don't believe and based on previous direction from the Desire Review Commission that these taller window sill heights does not create a potential privacy impact. Also point out here that you can see to the left portion of the slide is the rear of the building. And you can see that the second story is recessed quite a ways back from the first story, about 15 feet recessed back. And that results in about a 45-foot setback from the rear property line. I also wanted to point out, one thing that didn't really occur to staff until kind of putting these slides together is at the first story, you can see the pattern of windows here, those clear story windows. Then, then jump out when we were first reviewing this, those clear story windows. They do have very high sill, window sills, so it's not necessarily a privacy impact per se. But we, we have seen these before, these clear story windows. And there has been some, some concern expressed with regards to like layer from windows like this. So I just wanted to, to bring that to your attention because I was not discussing the agenda report. And then the rear elevation. And there was, just to point out also, there was one letter that was submitted or email submitted and provided to the commission as correspondence from the rear property owner expressing some concern about the potential visibility from those upper story windows. And I'll get into a little bit about that with regards to the landscaping and some further slides. But I did want to point that out and just be mindful that the findings is that the findings with regards to privacy is, is if that private potential privacy impact is an unreasonable impact, not whether there, there might be an impact or not, it's, it's whether it's really unreasonable. And there's somebody talking, so if you can-
Yeah, hold on. Yeah, Steve, if Bob Hirsch, if you could mute yourself.
Or, or Sean can mute him.
Or Sean can mute.
I muted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, just with regards to the trees being preserved or removed, there are five smaller trees on site proposed to be removed. There's some additional ones along the left-hand side, which are, are shown here to be removed. I'm not even sure they're actually on the property itself. But all the larger trees are going to be protected, which includes the two larger oaks on the left, along the left property line, there's a redwood in the front yard and a potocarpus or African fern pine at the rear. And so all those larger trees, and there's additionally some smaller trees that are going to be preserved. With regards to landscaping, there is new landscaping proposed. It includes pitasporum, potocarpus, which are evergreens and bamboo along the right side and the rear of the property. Those proposed landscaping elements would create some screening to help mitigate potential privacy concerns. Along the left-hand side, there's those two oak trees that I mentioned. So no, no, no put, no proposed screening there other than those existing trees do provide a bit of screening and trying to be mindful of not planting anything new in those areas which would potentially need irrigation and not, not the best for, for mature oak trees. At the rear, there's also some existing landscaping that is proposed to be maintained in addition to the, the proposed new landscaping. And of course, news, new landscaping throughout the site, which would be subject to the Water Fisher Landscape Ordinance. And that would be further reviewed with the building permit. Staff did point out that at the left rear corner, there are plants proposed there, but we think that there needs to be some additional plants or some, some change of plants at that location because the ones that are proposed don't seem to be ones that are, that grow upright or taller to provide screening. So that's, that's one of our recommendations is to revise the planting at the left rear. So with that, staff is recommending the Design Review Commission approve this application subject to the findings and conditions contained in the agenda report. I do have those two specific conditions on the screen with regards to reducing the wall plate heights and providing the additional evergreen screening, which are recommended conditions along with other standard conditions in the agenda report. So again, that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you might have. And the applicant is here to provide an additional presentation. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Steve. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
No question.
Commissioner Ma, you have a question?
No, no question.
Go ahead.
No, I don't have any question.
Oh, you don't? Okay, my apologies. Commissioner Harding, anything?
No question.
Commissioner Kerik?
Well, I'm, I'm just kind of curious. I, I, Steve, I lobbed in a request to you to, you know, get a digital view of the rear from the neighbor's perspective. Does it anything come across on that or is that part of the applicant's presentation?
Um, well, I, I forwarded that to the applicant and so we'll, we'll see if they have included something in their presentation.
Okay, and my other question is, in, in the discussion and within the package, there's a, what they call a streetscape page, but it's basically just photographs of the adjoining houses. Is there any drawing or was there any representation of the front elevation of this compared to the adjacent homes? You know, what it would look in relative height?
Sorry, didn't know if I was me or not. Let, I believe I saw one. And I'll scroll real quick and maybe the applicant can also answer that question. But I, I thought I saw one. I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep looking and if I find it, oh.
Hi, I'm the applicant. I just wanted to jump in and say the photos that we're showing are what we're showing. But we did get that panoramic view from the rear yard, which we will go over during the presentation. But we didn't model the two adjacent homes. We're showing just the photos.
Great, thank you. Jude, any other questions?
No.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and go to the applicant? Either the applicant or their architect designer have comments and you have 10 minutes.
Hello, yes. Hi, my name's Isabel. The owners of the residence are actually on the call and they would like to say a few words before I begin the presentation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think they're unmuted right now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think that the, I cannot do the video somehow. Let me see. I can't somehow. Okay, good evening. I am Kailo Yamamura. My husband, son, and I have been living in Los Altos on this street for over 30 years. And we love living here so much and love our neighborhood, so we decided to retire here. My husband has become handicapped in recent years and cannot really travel any longer. So we want to build a new nice house here in order to really enjoy being at home. We also decided that a two-story house would be a good place to go so that we can preserve a nice backyard for us to spend time there. Building a new house would allow us to install a handicapped bathroom and other custom features for my husband on the ground floor. And so we sincerely hope that this project can be approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as you can see, the owners of 959 Altis Oaks Drive have lived at the residence for a number of years and they plan to make this their permanent home. Because of that, they wanted to reach out to their neighbors early to see if there was any concerns and if there was anything they could do to mitigate these concerns. The homes highlighted in red here are the homes that the neighbors that they reached out to. They received a number of positive responses, notably from the neighbor directly to the left and the neighbor directly to the right, which are the residences that are located most closely to the subject property. They also received no response from a couple of the homes located here with a question mark. And they received one ultimately neutral response and one negative response from the neighbor to the rear. They started the neighborhood outreach by dropping off the following letter in their neighbors' mailboxes. And they received overall positive feedback from a majority of the neighbors. I'm not going to go into this too deeply because you do have access to these files. But several of the neighbors did go as far as to sign letters of approval. So here you can see one from the neighbor to the right. Here's one from a neighbor across the street. And here's another from a neighbor across the street. They also did receive verbal, positive verbal or email approval of the proposed residence from the neighbors highlighted here. And the neighbors highlighted here, they received no response from. The neighbor across the street, the response was ultimately neutral. However, the neighbor to the rear, they did receive a negative response from. As soon as they learned that there were privacy concerns from this rear neighbor in regards to the rear-facing second story windows, they reached out to see if there's anything they could do to assuage these concerns. And we worked with the landscape architect to modify the privacy screening to do most effectively screen towards this rear-facing neighbor. We also offered to perform a study where we would have a drone at the locations of these rear-facing second story windows so that we could better study what types, sizes, and locations would be most effective to mitigate any privacy impacts on this rear-facing property. However, the rear-facing neighbor declined this offer because they had concerns that privacy planting could be excessively pruned or trimmed and then would therefore no longer provide the privacy screening. Because of this, the owners actually offered to pay to have privacy screening installed on his property. This way he could choose the type, size, location, and also make sure that it wasn't excessively pruned or trimmed in order to make him feel comfortable. However, he did ultimately decline this offer as well. Here are the panoramic views from the current residence looking towards the rear. As you can see, there are those two large trees that we are proposing to retain and they do provide ample screening towards the rear-facing properties. Additionally, you can see here with some of the proposed screening, it blocks the rear-facing neighbor almost entirely from the current property. Since we are proposing a two-story home, we wanted to look at other two-story residences within the neighborhood. And we noticed that there were an increasing number. So here you can see the ones that we've highlighted. And we also wanted to look more closely at images of these homes so we could get a feel for the style, massing, and materiality. So we've included some images of these homes here. Additionally, we wanted to zoom in a bit further and look more closely at the neighboring residences on Altis Oaks, Altis Oaks Drive to see if there were any predominant architectural styles, materials, or anything like that that we could bring into our design. As you can see here in many of these residences, the predominant roof form is hip-style roof. So this is something that we wanted to bring into our residence as well. We also noticed that many of the residences use stucco and a stone skirt in order to break up the massing at the first story. So this is also something that we pulled into our proposed design. While looking at these homes, we also noticed that several, several of them, such as this one here and this one here and this one here have an entry feature in order to highlight that entryway. And that was an additional feature we wanted to carry over into our design. Here are some photos of the existing residents. So we are proposing to demolish 2,359 square feet of existing building and garage. Here you can see that we are proposing 2,174 square feet at the first floor with a 480-square-foot garage and 986 square feet at the second floor. As you can see by the setbacks we are proposing, we are proposing more than the minimum on all elevations. Notably, we are proposing five foot seven inches more than the minimum at the rear elevation. And that occurs at this small piece of the rear-facing elevation, whereas the majority of the rear-facing home at the first story has an even greater setback. And we are proposing over 18 feet eight inches of second story rear setback. We're also proposing notably more than the minimum second story setbacks at both side property lines as well in order to mitigate any privacy concerns that they might have. So we are proposing 10-foot plate heights throughout. As Steve mentioned, we originally were showing 10 foot six at the living room, but we have decided to subsequently lower it to 10 feet. We are proposing nine feet throughout the second floor, but we do step down to eight feet at the right side of the property. This creates an overall height of 24 feet one inch, which is considerably lower than the max height of 27 feet. And the overall style, we drew influences from Frank Lloyd Wright, from modern Prairie style and from Japanese style when designing this home, but we also wanted to look closely at the neighboring homes. So you can see how we've brought in the stucco and brought in the stone skirt in order to break up the massing on the front elevation as well as the hip roofs, which break up the massing between the first and the second story. And we really wanted to stick to predominantly one roof type at the front, which is hip roofs, as well as maintaining consistent roof slopes throughout. We also studied carefully the left and right side elevations. Since the neighboring properties on the left and right side are located most closely to the subject property, they have the most potential- they have the most potential for privacy impact. So we really wanted to study the windows that we're showing here. And as you can see, we're showing minimal windows with high sill heights on the right side. And then coming around here to the left side, we are also showing minimal windows with high sill heights. Um, and in regards to the clerestory windows on the first floor, uh, we do have these two really large trees right here that do block, um, most of the light that would escape through these windows to the neighboring property. The color palette we are proposing is a neutral color palette that we feel will blend in well with the neighboring homes. Here's the proposed first floor plan. And here's the proposed second floor plan. And we've called out the distances from the second-story windows to the neighboring properties on either side. And you can see here that the distances to those neighboring properties are less than the distance from the rear elevation to even the rear property line and it's even farther to that rear residence. And the, because of this, we really did want to work with both neighbors on either side. And luckily, they have both said that they would approve the subject property since we aren't, um, imposing on their privacy. And we also did originally discuss the possibility of a balcony for this home, but we didn't want to impact any of the privacy of any of the neighbors. So we decided not to propose that. Here are the sill and header heights of the rear-facing windows. These are determined predominantly by egress requirements. So we can't raise them too much higher without not meeting the egress. And we additionally didn't want to move them to the side elevations. This would involve a floor plan redesign, but it could also potentially impact the privacy of those two side-facing neighbors, which are located a lot closer than the rear-facing neighbor. Here's the landscaping plan that we are proposing. We are keeping the two existing trees that we talked about earlier. And then we are showing a number of new trees and shrubs that range in height at maturity from five feet all the way up to 30 feet for the Japanese maple tree shown here. And we're locating this in the middle of the yard. Um, the master bedroom windows are located about here, so it provides screening towards this rear property, but it's also located far enough from the property line to mitigate any concerns about shadows. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, let's go, commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Michael? Michael, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yes, I have some question. Do you have, um, for the material, the windows? I would like to ask the, uh, the architect, uh, a few questions. First about the windows, uh, window type and material, I don't see. I only see, uh, on the elevation with the keynotes, with some kind of cloud window, is, is it gonna be aluminum fiberglass? And then do you have any window details? I would like to see a window detail or at least that describe how the window gonna be like. And then other question, uh, I believe the architect mentioned about the, um, the plate height on the second floor. Something about sloping, sloping down toward the, um, the, the sides. So I would like to know more about that, uh, because it's not very clear to me. So the architect can, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we haven't specified the exact window manufacturer yet, but we will most likely be going with aluminum windows. Uh, the majority of the operable windows will be casement windows and we don't have a window detail developed yet. But in regards to the plate heights, if you look at the second floor plan, there's two bathrooms, the master bathroom and then a secondary bathroom on the right side of the property. Both of those have eight-foot plate heights.
Okay. So what you're saying is that the, um, on the left and right side of the, the second-floor roof, it's actually, um, gonna be lower. It's not a nine-foot plate height, but it's an eight-foot, but the, the center or the middle, most of the part of the second floor will have a nine-foot plate.
Yeah, most will have nine-foot. Bathroom two on the left will also have nine-foot. Um, it's just the two bathrooms on the right side that will have eight-foot.
Okay, all right, but the roof is continuous, right? The, the roof eve is continuous, the same, same height, right?
Uh, we actually step it down a bit. Um, if you can, if I can share my screen again, I can show a bit on this image here.
Yeah, if you can point out, uh, you know, in detail that to me, then that'll be great.
Uh, so if you can see here, this is the roof eve here and then you can see on this volume, it's actually lower. Um, it might be more evident in the model. If you can see here how it steps down.
Okay, so just that part, okay, that one?
Yeah, these two volumes right here.
Okay, what about the left side?
The left side is at the same nine-foot.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, Jude, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a few. Um, just start with some low-hanging fruit. I did ask about a digital view from the neighbor's backyard looking back up towards the house, modeling the trees and the fence. Did you, did you have a chance to provide that?
So we did get a panoramic view from the neighbor's yard looking into our property, but we did not model the proposed planting there. I can pull that up if you want, but it does not have the proposed planting in that view.
Can you show it to us, just so we can see what if we were standing on their patio, taking into, topography into account and what would they see standing at their patio?
Yeah, one sec. Uh, so here's a view. It's not necessarily from their patio. It's still at the rear of the subject property's yard. Um, but this is from the rear fence line, looking at the subject property.
But in your digital model, do you have, you know, with your new home, could you place your point of view in their, in their yard and look back at the new house at the second-story windows?
Yes. Um, so here it is now. These trees are, we're not showing anything that isn't a tree right now, so we're not showing any of the shrubs, um, that would provide even more privacy screening. And then, um, we aren't showing, uh, this would be the Japanese maple that would be a lot taller and shade this window here. Um, we're not showing it at maturity right now, but, um, these trees are more, uh, representative at this stage. But we can update that to provide that if that's something that would be useful.
Okay, it would, it would be good to have a view just for me, standing, you know, putting yourself on their patio, taking into account the fence line, taking into account the initial and future height of the, the, the screening along that back fence, what they would see. That would be, I think, helpful for all.
Okay.
You also mentioned, uh, this, uh, well, let's talk about the fence. The fence is quite low in the back there as well. I know there's a series of fences. Uh, was there any indication of maybe increasing the height of that fence?
Uh, if, uh, I think the owners would be willing to increase the height of the fence.
I think that the currently, that the fence is seven, seven-foot?
It's much lower than that. It's, it's.
The back left is super low.
Yeah.
Well, we have an image of that. We have a, uh, the panoramic view. Isabel, remember the, uh, the view from our house of the fence? And, uh, I can tell you, back, back when I could stand, uh, I'm nearly six feet tall and I couldn't possibly see over that fence, just standing near it. You couldn't see over it.
Yeah, it's true that the, on the left-hand side, uh, that belongs to the other neighbor. Um, it's a.
Oh, that one is.
That is short.
Yesterday.
Yes.
Right, the other neighbor.
Yeah.
Sort of diagonally behind us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these, these are great ground views from the existing elevation, but, you know, we're talking about potentially, you know, from 12 feet higher than you're currently at, given, given the, the sightlines out of the windows. For the, for the architect, getting back to the, uh, the elevations, you set the house over, uh, a foot, a half a foot higher than it currently is. Is there any reason you did that? Cause it's, at some points, it's over two feet out of the ground.
Yeah, so, um, originally we wanted to create as few steps as possible. Um, since Mark, uh, is in a wheelchair, we wanted to make it as easy as possible, um, to enter the home. So we did want to minimize the steps towards the front of the home. So when you drive into the driveway, um, there's not a bunch of steps to then step up.
Well, well, you're actually raising the elevation of the house.
Sorry, I misunderstood. Um, yeah, the finished floor elevation was determined with civil engineer based on the adjacent grade.
Okay, well, it's higher, um, substantially than, than, uh, before. Uh, it's curious about that. And you, you've mentioned accessibility, but I don't see any elevator in the house. Is there a reason why you didn't include one?
So, uh, we planned it so that the first floor plan, um, if you can see, it has Mark's bedroom and master bathroom there and then Kyo's bedroom is on the top floor. Um, so we talked about adding a chairlift into the stairs, but it's still not something that, um, we fully discussed whether we're gonna add that into the plans or not.
Okay. Um, and then getting back to the streetscape, you know, this is a, you talk about neighborhood character and consistency of elements, but, uh, this home, this street is all one-story ranchers with, by my determination, eight-foot plate heights. And these are relatively low set to the ground. Did you ever do a streetscape elevation showing the height of the new home compared to the adjacent neighbors or anybody else on the street?
Uh, we looked at, um, the, what civil was showing for the two neighboring properties on either side for the finished floor and ridge height, but we did not model up these homes specifically.
Okay, all right, um. Okay, that, that's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Oh, there is a photo, if it helps, um, that the, the rear neighbor took from their patio looking towards our home. I don't know if that would be helpful, helpful to show, but I can show the screen real quick. Uh, so this is the photo that he submitted with his letter.
So presumably that's from the ground floor looking back at the fence?
Yeah, it's from probably his patio looking back at the fence towards our property.
Well, um, okay, I think the house is actually a little bit to the right of that. That tree is. Ask the neighbor, but.
Chair Blockas could, just for clarification. So I just wanted to clarify, um, based on the topographic survey, the existing house, the finished floor is 101.7. The proposed is 107-point, oh, sorry, 102.2. I think that's about a six-inch difference. I mean, the older houses typically had lower finished floors and with different building codes and trying to get positive drainage away. I don't know, six inches is maybe not that significant raising the, the finished floor height. And then with regards to the commissioner, Carrick's, um, what he expressed about the plate heights in the neighborhood, that, that's also what, what staff expressed regarding that existing neighborhood. And based on our estimates too, the, the neighboring properties are eight-foot wall plates and that neighborhood is fairly consistent with that. There are some residences that may have raised, um, you know, entries and other features up to, up to like a nine-foot plate, but it's a fairly consistent, lower, um, scale neighborhood. So I just wanted to relay that back.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kirk, anything else?
No, that, that, good for now, thanks.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Harding, anything?
No, no additional comments.
Great, yeah, I had my questions answered as well. Uh, so we'll go ahead and close this one off. Sean, do we have any community input? Anyone that you can see online that has comments in regard to this project?
We do have a, um, Bob Hirsch with his hand up. Mr. Hirsch, did you want to speak on this item?
He's muted.
Yes, he's muted. I'm asking him to unmute, but. Mr. Hirsch, did you wish to speak on this item or another item?
Can you hear me? Yes. You can hear me now?
Yes, did you wish to speak on this item or a different item?
On this item, actually, um, I own the house across the street at 968 Altus Oaks. I bought it in 1973. And, uh, so I've known Mark and Kyo since 1991 and they've been really nice neighbors. And so I, I'm in favor of this whole project. I think it's gonna be a really a nice update for the neighborhood because our neighborhood was built in 1956 and they were kind of cheap tract houses. And this, I think, is gonna be a nice upgrade for our neighborhood. And, um, I think it looks really nice, so I'm totally in favor of it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, anyone else?
I am, uh, is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
I see another hand raised.
Okay.
SMG66U, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, this is, uh, this is the neighbor on the rear side. And there are roughly 20 feet long windows facing my property. Standing on their roof, you can see inside my, uh, family room. You can see inside my bedrooms. And just planting trees which you don't know when they will grow. Anyone can cut them. And so I have very serious, uh, privacy concerns here. And I don't see anyone of you addressing that.
Sir, can I have your, uh, name and address for the record?
My name is, uh, yeah, my name is Dalip Kumar. I am at 955 Linda Vista Way.
Thank you, sir.
I'm the property right behind. I'm the, I am the property that is getting impacted.
Thank you.
As the owner said, they, they have reduced windows on the sides to take care of the privacy concerns of the side neighbors, but they have done nothing. So basically, they would be peeping at my property inside my rooms at their west.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else, Sean?
And then I'd recommend if, if anybody else has a comment, you can unmute yourself as well and just speak freely.
Does not seem like we have any other further public comment, so I'll go ahead and close that up and open it up to commissioner discussion. Sam, you wanna go ahead and start?
Sure, the, uh, I like the project. It's well-designed and it, uh, it does fit in. I am concerned about the last speaker and the privacy for him. And the, uh, that's really my primary concern is that, uh, that doesn't sound like that has been properly, uh, discussed and mitigated. So that's it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kirk, any comments?
Oh, yeah, uh, well, to the neighbor directly behind, all my, all my questions are directed with concern to your privacy. So this commission is here to hear your thoughts and weigh in. So, uh, just to confirm, we are hearing you. You know, I, I do have a concern about the privacy in the rear yard. I stood in that rear yard and clearly saw through the gap. I think the photo that was shown is very misleading because that tree, uh, is way off to one side if you look at a aerial Google image and it'll obscure, um, not a lot of the second story. So there needs to be some significant screening along that rear line. And when you couple that with the change in topography and the, what I would deem excessive floor-to-floor heights of the structure, I think, uh, that. I think that, that second-story windows sightlines are going to look directly into the neighbor's rear yard patio. So at a minimum, I would want to see one view from the neighbor's rear yard patio, looking back at the house. That's accurate. I believe that would be easy to do with this digital world we live in. I would also like to see some site sections showing, you know, those relationships. And so I think coupled with substantial mature screening and maybe additional fencing and maybe reduced plate heights, I, I think it would go a long way to addressing the neighbor's concern as well as potentially better integrating it into the streetscape on Altus Oaks. I think this is, this home is really going to stand out when it's built higher than it currently is with 10-plus plate heights on the first floor and nine on the second floor. It's going to have a dramatic streetscape effect. So, you know, we're not being negative in terms of adding the second story. Matter of fact, I think the home is wonderfully designed. I just think it's excessive in terms of heights and bulk and mass. And then couple that with the privacy impact. I'd like to see a little bit more work done on this one. Great, thank you. Commissioner Harding? Or did I hit you? No. Sam?
You got his response already.
Again, okay. Commissioner Ma?
Yes. Yeah, I pretty much have the same comments by, from other commissioner. You know, the generally, I like the house design. I mean, it's well-designed, except those, those few comments, like the plate height is too tall. Ground floor and second floor, they are just too tall. Consider the adjacent houses are all one-story range with an eight-foot plate height. If this is in a two-story with a, in a neighborhood with more two-story rung, then you will be, you'll be okay. But again, coming back to this neighborhood, this is the first one, you know, within that neighborhood. So I would like to see a lower plate height. The other one is the, the privacy in the back. In addition to what you, I think you already addressed most of it. You know, I think to see how the privacy impact, of course, I think photo, photograph, picture from both sides need to be taken. And I would like to see the view from both sides. From the neighbor's side, standing at the line of sight, at the patio, at the window, looking back to the subject house. And then maybe you can have a drone flying over, provide the actual line of sight from the second floor window back to the neighborhood at 959 Linda Vista. So with that, you know, then the commission and I can have a better understanding how much of a privacy. And then based on that, then you may have to revise or, you know, provide a better privacy screening, you know, for, to mitigate the privacy impact. That's what I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Ma. My comments are fairly similar. The one thing that hasn't been brought up that I, I don't know if I absolutely love it or don't like it. This is a two-story element in the front left of the front door. I think I'm leaning towards, I really like it. I think it does a little bit of a breakup with the horizontal slats or whatnot there. I'm a huge fan of Prairie style. I think it's a very, very attractive home, but I do feel scale relative to the neighborhood that it is probably just a little bit too oversized. And my concern is if we could get a streetscape elevation of it to see how it fits in with, you know, at least immediate two neighbors, that would go a long way for me. I think the back left of the property needs a new fence. And I'd like to see a little bit more detail view, one way or the other, similar to the other commissioners' comments of the impact of the rear property with particular trees or foliage or whatnot. And what exactly is the view as it stands right now? So those are my comments. Do we have any motion at this point?
I can, I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Kirk. Bear with me as I get the. I move that we continue. Sorry. Move that we continue SC 21-0023 with the specific direction to the applicant to reduce the first and second-story plate heights a minimum of six inches each to, to bring back a rendered, excuse me, a streetscape view on Altus Avenue, showing the relationship of this house adjacent to its neighbors with particular emphasis on what the plate heights are on the adjoining neighbors' roof lines. Not the ridge heights, but the roof lines, the eve lines. Also, a more detailed developed views from the neighbor's patio, looking back at the house as well as from the second-story windows, looking at the neighbor's rear patio. Let's see, what else am I missing? And further development of a landscaping plan showing what the true heights would be at initial planting in a couple of years, three years down the road. And Commissioner Kirk, I'm assuming the streetscape siding is based on the reduction of the plate heights. So after the plate heights have been adjusted, a current streetscape elevation. Yes, you know, our, our preference has always been nine-foot plates on the first story and eight-foot plates on the second story as a, a acceptable solution, especially on a newer home integrated into an existing neighborhood like this. We, we do have latitude, but we have to come off these 10 and nine numbers. They're way too high for what's going on there. Okay, do I have a second of the motion?
Can I just ask a question, Chair? So I, I noted all of the directions from Commissioner Carrick. I just wanted to point out with regards to the detailed views from the neighbor, it would, it would require some agreement from the neighbor if you want very more specific grade, kind of grade elevations on those views. So I just want to point out if there's any sort of limitation in getting access to their property. It's, it might come back with less accurate information than you might expect, but we'll direct the applicant to do their best to work with the neighbor and move from there.
Let me ask a question. Is the rear neighbor still attending the meeting? If you could acknowledge you're still here?
I, I see him.
Okay, yeah, SMG996U. In an effort to verify and make improvements to the property, are you open to the applicant getting these sightlines from your rear property?
Yes, I'm open to that. But see, the, the problem is the sunlight comes from their side to my side. And even the current trees, I had sent the picture, that's the, even the current tree, the large tree that you saw on this one of the sides, it blocks all the sunlight to my property. And that is what I was trying to show with that picture, that right now with just that one tree, my, my yard gets zero access to sun. And if you put more trees there, that will block it, then I will have no sunlight in my backyard.
So what you're looking for are trees that give a certain level of privacy, yet let this sunlight come into your backyard?
The sunlight is coming from, you know, most of the day. The sunlight is coming from their side to my, and if you see the pictures, I have my 40% yard is already without sunlight.
Okay.
They, this is what I have been telling them from the beginning, that they should move the windows. They could have moved their master bedroom toward the windows, toward the front. They could have, have smaller windows on this thing or the windows raised high so that at least I can live peacefully in my property.
Okay.
We're, I think we're a little bit, we're not in public comment anymore. But I think there was a quick question regarding the willingness of the neighbor. And I, I think I heard his answer, and so I think you're in a motion right now. So I was just asking for clarification and.
I'm sorry, yes, I.
I want to come, okay, and when it comes back, there can be additional discussion, but. So they open it back up for public comment.
The, the neighbor has agreed to allow access to do those things. So I think we have our answer on that and we'll continue with the motion.
I second it.
Okay, we have a second. So we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and go to vote. So Commissioner Kirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
And Commissioner Blockus is an aye. So it's voted four to zero to continue the project to a later date with the items that we enlisted on the. From Commissioner Kirk. Okay, we'll go ahead and close that out and move on to item number three, SC 21-0009 at the property 166 Lyle Street. Sean, do you have a report for us?
Here we go, let me get my video on. Here we go. Good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. The project before you again is a design review application for a new two-story house. The project includes 1,879 square feet at the first story and 1,306 square feet at the second story. Try to get this page to turn. This slide provides rendering of the proposed house, very similar to the last proposal with the exception of the, of the front light well that has been added to the front. Previously, a light well is located on the exterior side of the structure. And that has been revised to be relocated to the front elevation and then also to the back. And that'll be shown, it's shown within the drawing set and then also be shown in future slides. Again, this property is located in diverse character neighborhood as defined the city's residential guidelines. A majority of the neighborhood is comprised of single-family homes which are located across on Lyle and directly adjacent, but directly across on Galiban and, and directly behind our multifamily homes, which with greater scales and taller plate heights, as conveyed in the staff report and is discussed in the last meeting on December 15th. So this project was reviewed by the Design Review Commission on December 15th. And at that time, the commission asked the applicant to update the floor plan and site plan to show the light well reconfiguration will, and how will affect the project and to be compliant with the setback standards. They asked to reduce, the commission asked to reduce the first-story plate heights to nine feet and the second story to eight feet. Second story, they asked to study the side and corner side to give some articulation to this two-story wall along the exterior side. The commission wanted to know of any impacts on neighboring trees due to the depth of the basement. And the commission wanted to see a shoring plan due to the distance to the basement setbacks. The applicant in, in response, did relocate the light well, which was previously located on this side of the structure. They have modified it to have a light well on the front and a light well off of the rear. This is shown in your updated site plans, tree protection plans, floor plans, elevations. And that is provided for you in your drawing set. The lights, the light wells will comply as reflected, since they do meet the front and exterior side and interior side and rear setbacks. They will meet the development standards for the R110 district. The elevation show that the applicant, while the commission did recommend modifying the plates to a nine-foot plate, the applicant retained the 10-foot plates at the first story. The applicant did provide a letter relating to the commission's request and the basis why the plate heights were not reduced. And they are available to address questions why they did not reduce the plate heights at the first story. The elevations do show a reduction of the second-story plate heights to nine feet along the front elevation left side. So along this front portion of the structure, as conveyed here, we have the original draw, or the proposed drawing from today and then the previous drawing of December 2nd. It does reflect that this front portion of the structure at the second story has been reduced down to a nine-foot plate. As we go along to the right side of the structure, is reduced to a nine-foot plate for a significant length. And then the last 17 feet on the right side is elevated back to a nine-foot-six plate for the master bedroom. This is reflected on the rear side again with a taller plate at the, at the second story for the master bedroom and then a dropping of the plate along the rear side and then along the left side. So the applicant did partially respond to the reduction of the plate on the second story. And I will go, the floor plans and the exterior elevations. And I don't know if it's not showing the right one. The floor plans and the exterior elevation do show that the stairwell is, the stairwell wall is recessed one foot along the first and second story to break up the exterior wall planes. This is located on, on this plan sheet on the right side exterior elevation. It does reflect a, an articulation or recession of this, of the stairwell elevation on this elevation along the first and second story, the introduction of IPE siding, and then also the introduction of a dark gray color material along the side to provide some variation in color, variation material, and then a level of articulation of about one foot along this wall face. This elevation does show the proposed new elevation, and then this was the previous elevation below. Staff did provide you both sets of drawings, both the original drawings from December 15th and the most current ones. Again, this provides examples of the color changes. If we go around to the front, there is a darker gray at the second story. It is wrapping around the side, it is below the widget window forms, and it does continue along the left side of the structure. And then this is the front balcony that's facing towards the street. The applicant has provided an updated materials board that does reflect the addition of the new dark gray color. And that is included in your packet. In regards to, you know, additional information was provided regarding potential impacts on neighboring trees. The applicant did modify the depth of the basement as conveyed in the staff report. Previously, the, the depth was approximately 12 feet, has now been reduced to 10 feet, and that is conveyed in the report. The, the street tree protect, the tree protection plan has been updated. In the previous plan, they, there were trees shown on the plan that do not exist. And the tree is updated to reflect the trees that exist on the site today. The concern was in regards to the overall depth of the, of the basement area, which the applicant could speak about. There are no immediately adjacent trees, either on the immediately adjacent neighboring property or immediately adjacent on the property being proposed here at the site. The applicant did provide an updated arbitrage report that staff did forward to by email. The applicant, you know, does in the packet provide a shoring plan. The shoring plan does show the usage of stitch piers, which will prevent. A a caloche cut that will prevent shoring extending beyond the property lines or potentially increasing the impact to neighboring properties. A landscape plan similar to what was provided before is provided on sheet L one. Discussions provided in the agenda report regarding landscaping. Overall, the existing and proposed landscaping staff does believe meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations. As the commission is aware. This lot does have an existing constructed ADU at the rear of the site. And so directly behind the site or towards the back of the property is an existing accessory dwelling unit at the site today. This concludes staff's presentation, the applicant is here to respond to questions and staffs available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sean. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Sean?
Yeah, I do, Sean, I I you mentioned that the shoring would, I think you said. Penetrate into the adjoining neighbors property, subterranean, is that correct?
No, so what will what they will use and the applicant could speak to the architect is they will typically use stitch piers. Which will be columns that will be entered into the ground that will allow to that will provide support to the overall. Structure as they're excavating to prevent an actual caloche cut. Which a caloche cut will will extend and potentially be closer to the site property line versus a stitch pier, which will be more beneficial. For landscaping and trees. That is conveyed in the shoring plan, which is within the plant set, it does show a stitch pier plan.
So no, no penetration into adjoining property lines, subterranean or other.
No, for any property, it is not permissible.
Okay. Thank you.
On the project site unless Steve.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention when Sean Sean said caloche cut and I believe the standard is. For caloche, you can't have more than a four foot vertical cut. And then like a two to one slope back from that vertical cut, so. So with the stitch piers, you can do a horizontal cut and put the stitch piers in, put. Put the shoring in to have a more vertical cut without you know, using less area essentially. It involves a little bit more work, but but in these situations, that's that's what Jack what that's what you have to do.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sam?
No.
Commissioner Kirk, any questions?
None at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Ma.
No, I don't have any question.
I did, I have a couple just sort of clarification. Sean, so originally the applicant. And they still have a ten foot plate height and we had asked for a nine foot for the first floor. And on the second floor, there was a nine foot plate height. And we had and part of it was nine foot six and we had asked for eight foot six and so neither of those.
Well, I I should clarify too, I mean, so they I misdata, so they are proposing. At eight six on the majority of the structure with the exception of the bedroom, which is a nine six. So if you look at the drawings themselves, the elevation drawings, majority of the drawings are showing a plate height at the second story of eight six. The exception is the master bedroom, which they're projecting up nine six, so they. The project plans do comply with your direction in regards to majority of the second story with the exception of the master bedroom. The master bedroom, which is on the right rear corner, has a taller plate height.
Okay.
The second store, the first story plate heights. Were not modified, the applicant does have a perspective in regards to. The finished floor height and the heights of finished floors and surrounding properties. And and the relationship it may have to the overall plate of this house, but that.
And that was in the letter that you had sent out.
Yes, that was something that wasn't available to me when I had created the reports, I wasn't able to incorporate it to the report for you.
Okay, great, thank you, so we'll go ahead and close that off. Why don't we go ahead and get the applicant and or the architect and you have ten minutes to. Walk us through what you have done.
Good evening, planning commission, good evening, my name is Navneet Aaron, I'm the owner at one six six Lyle Street. Sean, thank you for your presentation, Sean, is there a way I can get access to share my screen please? Yes. So I just give me a moment, please. All right, please let me know if you can see my screen.
And yes, I can see your screen.
Awesome, thank you, thank you once again for the opportunity this evening to present. The the plan and and all the effort that me and our architectural team have been doing to to build my house for my family. I'm a long term, long time Los Altos resident, like I had mentioned on December fifteenth when we were here, lived here since two thousand eleven. And work here and near downtown. We have, we took the, just to give a brief history, we started in April twenty twenty one and we were complete in, I believe in August. And we were put on originally for DRC in October, which was postponed and ultimately happened in December twenty twenty one. And the direction that we got, I believe we have gone back to the drawing board to incorporate pretty much all of the feedback. And I do want to share my perspective on the only one comment that we have not directly addressed the ten feet plate height on the first floor. But we have, I believe we have taken substantial measures to comply with all the direction that we got from the planning commission. Let me just go straight into it. One of the biggest change that we did, thank you for Sean for clarifying it because my heart stopped beating when you said we did not drop the plate height on second floor. We came down from nine six to eight six, in fact, for for let me for. On second floor, for guest bath, laundry, master closet, master bath, shower and walk-in closet, the plate height has been dropped to seven feet eleven inches. For for master bath, guest bedrooms, all the guest bedrooms in the front. And along the entire front facade, family room upstairs, staircase and hallway, the facade, the the plate heights have been dropped to eight feet six inches. So for ninety percent of the second story, we have dropped the plate height to either eight lower than eight feet or eight feet six inches. From nine feet six inches that we had last time. And only for the master bedroom that faces the extremely tall structure I'm about to show you guys across Gabi Land Street. Which was recently approved by City of Los Altos, only in my master bedroom and I prefer we are requesting to retain the nine feet six plate height. Also, please, especially because we do not have the ability to do any coffered ceilings in modern architecture. Modern architecture is penalized in 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 planning commissions most of the time. Because modern architectures do not offer the applicant to have the ability to do coffered ceilings. And therefore, no room to be able to have vaulted ceilings or higher ceilings inside those. So modern architecture is is the most penalized architecture when it comes to living spaces. And we're requesting that we be given the the permission to just keep the nine feet six only in the master bedroom and everywhere else. Drop it either below eight feet or to eight feet six inches across the entire second floor. Moving on from second floor. I would like to discuss our 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 neighborhood. And as you know, last time we had four neighbor who came to the to the meeting and talked in favor of the project, including immediate neighbors. Several neighbors of support were provided and I still have hundred percent support from all our neighbors. My kids and their kids and all the community people, we we all hang out together, we play together and so on. So we have amazing support from 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 my neighbors all around here and many other Los Altos community members. But the point I would try to draw with this image is the the my immediate neighbor across Gabi Land Street. The newly approved project at one forty Gabi Land. Please look at this, please look at this bulky, bulky, massive thirty feet tall structure, which has been recently approved by commission. Right across my property staring right into my property into my backyard where my kids will be playing. And this structure stands at eighteen feet, their their first floor plate height starts at eighteen feet above the above the finish above the grade level. Our, we have explicitly dropped our first floor plate heights to nine inches, the bare minimum to make sure water doesn't go in. We have explicitly dropped our plate side plate height on the sorry, the first floor finished floor heights above the grade as opposed to eighteen inches right here. Which has recently been approved, then their plate heights are ten feet. Our plate heights I'm requesting to retain to be to be ten feet in the in the first floor. Their their overall height is thirty feet. And we are, of course, a much, much, much smaller structure being a modern architecture, ten feet plus eight and a half or nine nine and a half feet, twenty about twenty one feet total total building height. So you can see this big bulky massive structure right across my property, looking into my property, approved by this commission and the city council. And and I feel it's unfair to me, I mean, I'm not a I'm I don't know how to use superlative verb words and verbs in this meeting. I'm I'm a simple resident and from my perspective, it feels so unfair and unjust. When last time the discussion was happening around my ten feet, we have done everything we could. To to drop the ceiling heights on the second floor, you can see clearly. And I'm humbly requesting the commission to please grant me the ten feet plate height that I'm requesting. Taking into account that we have dropped our first floor, first floor, first floor level, finished floor level to nine inches. So that even when you compare it to the larger neighborhood, when you when you start looking at the larger neighborhood where the first or finished floor level for most of them. Tends to be at twelve inches, sometimes sixteen inches, sometimes eighteen inches, sometimes even more. By the time you look at their and ours effective plate height comparison, I believe we are at par. Or or probably just a tad bit even lower than them in many, many, many cases, right? Thank you so much for considering the second part here, this is the discussion on the first floor plate heights. Moving on, we definitely paid attention to the feedback we got. Our our basement ceiling heights, floor to ceiling heights were eleven feet, we dropped them to ten feet, bringing the structure up. And as in not digging as much deeper as we needed to, so thanks for that feedback, we were happy to. Of course, there was a lot of work incorporated, but we are happy to to comply with that. Once again, the the fourth feedback we got, which we complied with was the the direction to remove the light well from the Gabi Land street side setback. And if we had to break it up into two parts and to to address it in the front elevation and the front and the and the rear. This does eat up into the backyard, which I was hoping we would not have to eat up originally because my kids will play there and we will host gatherings with friends and family here. But it is what it is and we reluctantly, we had to do the design all over again, but this is what it is. We are happy to comply once again and given and and completely given the direction provided by by the planning commission right here. One of the the fourth point or the fifth point that was brought up by the commission was a view from Gabi Land Street. Actually, first I would like you to take back to the the neighbor who's actually gonna look into my house. These five condo units which have been approved, this looks straight into this thirty this thirty feet tall building. This is the building which looks into my house right here in this view. In fact, I will plant trees, tall trees to protect my privacy. Which nobody had, nobody else cared for at that time, probably when the planning commission was approving for. But I will, I will definitely plant trees because my kids are gonna be here, I'm gonna be here, my family is gonna be here, so I will definitely plant trees. To protect my own privacy. So that's a different point, but the the direction on this on this particular facade last time was. That it had a vertical appeal, it came across as bulky and we went back to the drawing board with the architecture team. And several changes were made, four explicit changes were made to to break up the bulk and mass that was being discussed here last time. First change is, as you can clearly see, the indentation for the stairwell that 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 exists there, so the indentation to break up. Between the front and the back of the of the house, second change to incorporate a horizontal band to create a sense of horizontal massing. Or eliminating the vertical verticality that existed, third change using of IP siding material to provide more accent. And the fourth change to incorporate use of horizontal windows at the lower lower level to to add more accent to it. So these are the four changes that we made on just this one elevation in order to comply with or to do our best, our very, very best. In order to to comply with the direction that was provided by the by the commission here. We we were also asked to to provide a shoring plan because of the short setback. This is a narrow lot to begin with and we are, we worked with the structural firm to provide a conceptual shoring plan all along the all along the. Then all around the wall, the basement wall between us and the neighboring property. So to be definitely incorporated this as well in our in our plans, this was another change which was suggested by the planning commission last time. And I would like to next to discuss the trees that are on the property. And I would like to invite David, David, are you here, David is our our arborist from Kyle T, David, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Awesome, David. Please take it over, I'm happy to move the slides for you.
Okay, sounds good. Hello, good evening.
Navneet, I'm sorry to say you've reached your ten minutes unless the chair would like to extend your time.
Let's give him one minute for the. Arborists to give a brief summary of what's going on there.
Okay, cool, yeah, I'll try to be cool as possible here, so yeah, there's ten trees located on the site. Only one protected tree is to be removed, that's London Plain tree number one right there. The other trees to be removed, two through seven are under under fifteen inches, not protected. Two through six, there's there's London Plain tree number one, yeah, I shall know. This tree has been radically topped. Under the power lines, decay at all the topping cuts, so it was given a poor condition rating. High, there's a high future limb failure risk because of the topping cuts. Yeah, trees one through seven, non-protected birch trees and the one Japanese maple tree, all the birch trees are pretty much. In decline due to all the drought stress conditions on site. Well, there was one comment about neighboring trees be impacted by basement, there's there's not any neighboring trees. That I can see that are going to be impacted by the basement.
There are no trees along this along this at all, the the neighbor has structures all along the neighboring along the fence line that they share with us.
Okay, let's go ahead and wrap it up.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I can answer any questions as needed as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? Why don't we go ahead and Sam, any questions for the applicant?
No.
Jude?
No.
Michael? Michael, you're muted, I guess?
No, I don't have any questions, so.
Actually, Commissioner Blockus.
Yes.
Well, I do have one question, was the applicant aware of the project next across the street? Cause that was a planning commission item and there was a signage out there for. Months, I was wondering if the applicant attended those hearings at the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. I was aware that a project would come up there, but I would have been just really, really busy with work and I just never had time. I I I really regret it. But just because of my work and family life, I just couldn't make it to the meetings.
And and do you understand that this commission is not the commission that approved that project, do you understand that?
From my perspective, it is City of Los Altos, I hope City of Los Altos looks at every project equivalently and understands that, you know. It's not, I don't have a personal thing about any particular planning commission, to me, every planning commission is the same. And I hope the rules are the same and the fair for everybody to play with.
Do you understand that that project is in a different zone of the the city?
I understand, but again, this is that's a technical mumbo jumbo, at the end of the days, people are gonna live in those units and they're gonna look at my property, that's gonna be the reality of my life, I know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the questions I had were on the the same line as Jude, as far as, you know, we're we're not part of the. Planning commission who did the property across the street, it's completely zoned differently, they have different requirements, different setbacks, different height elevations. A whole different system relative to it just. a whole different system relative to, it just happens to be this particular property is sort of between a R1 neighborhood and a multi-use neighborhood. And those are different requirements for each particular property within that particular zoning. So I have no further questions. Let's go ahead and close off. That, Sean, do we have any comments from the public in regards to this particular project?
I am looking at, is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Or please raise your hand. I, I do not see any raised hands for this item. If any member of the public would like to speak, they can please unmute themselves and speak and we can select in order. Chair, we, we have no public speakers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments and let's go to commissioner discussion. Does anyone want to take the lead on this? Michael, you want to go ahead and start?
Okay. All right, I'll start. Yeah, I think back to the book and discussion and some statement about the apartment, the new, new building across the street. That's totally a different zoning. And yeah, that was approved by another commission, even though it's a same city by, by different standard, different commission, different discussion. And when you bought this, I want to mention, when you bought this property at the time, you should be aware that your cross street is a multifamily. Just like when you buy a property next to a supermarket or commercial building, you should be aware of the situation. I mean, it, it's unfair to tell us that you feel unfair that you live across a multifamily zoning. Okay, so the, on top of that, I mean, I'm not familiar with the project, the one multifamily, because it's not, it did not go through our commission. However, I, I, I do see that the elevation that it was just shown on the slides. Yeah, it looks to me that it has a ten-foot ground floor plate. However, the second floor was recessed from the ground floor planned by a few feet. That's why they have that roof between that, the second floor and ground floor. So it was not that, on the same plan. So back to yours, I mean, I'm still concerned about the height because along that side street, the elevation is still one plan, pretty much one plan. I know you, you tried reset, recess part of the, the stairway and adjust some of the, the play height on the second floor. But you have to aware along that side street, your ground floor and second floor is still pretty much on the same plan compared to the other one, on the, on, on the other side of the street, a multifamily. And also, it's a different zoning. It's a different zoning. Yours is on the single family zoning. So back to the other part of the design. I, on the other hand, I do appreciate that you drop most of the second floor play height to eight foot six and just keeping that the master in the back. And then the front elevation is reduced, even though your, your ground floor is not reduced. And then some of your other revision actually improved the, the elevation, elevation a little bit, you know, with the different type of material and other stuff. So I, I have not, at this time, I have not come out with the, whether or not I'm gonna support or, you know, would like to see some other improvements. I would like to keep on thinking about, you know, my decision along the way and I want to hear some other discussion from other commissioners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Ma. Commissioner Kuric, any comments?
I'll mute myself there. Well, well, first of all, once again, I'm, I'm not gonna defend the DRC. I am gonna defend the DRC and the reason why this project's coming back again in front of us is because it was technically incorrect the first time around. The architect had a light well in a side yard setback that wasn't allowed. So yeah, that was the main reason why the project went back. There were always other comments about bulk and mass and height, which I think were all fair comments. And I think you've heard that earlier tonight. You know, we really strive to minimize the impact of height on adjacent neighbors, especially in these transitional neighborhoods. So I'm disappointed that the project didn't come back with a nine, nine-foot plate height on the first floor, although I would be willing tonight to go to nine foot six, keeping consistent with our other project tonight. And to me, that would go a long way in appeasing, appeasing or addressing what we, we stated prior. The other issue with the shoring and all of that, that was done to protect the neighbor adjacent because it wasn't only the trees, but when you're building a twelve-foot basement three, five feet off the property line, that has a potential impact to adversely affect the foundation on the, the neighbor. So I think it was fair, once again, to request that drawing to reaffirm to the neighbor that what is being done on your property is gonna be safe and won't affect the value or the stability of the, of the property. So in general, though, I think by dropping the plate height to nine foot six would allow the remaining seven foot eleven plate height on the second story, which is being done because they are technically up against the daylight plane. I think they would be able to regain some height in that area of the second story if they drop the, the first floor plate height to nine foot six. So I think I could move to approve this on the condition that that plate height be dropped.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Kuric. Commissioner Harding?
Commissioner Harding, you're muted. Can you repeat yourself?
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I'm in agreement with, with Jude. I would like to see this approved and I would agree with the Jude's comments about plate height. So I would be in favor under those circumstances.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harding. Yeah, my comments, a little bit different, but probably some of the same. I was not at the initial meeting of this particular project, so this is new to me. I went out there yesterday, frankly, had trouble getting around the property. I went around towards the ADU and almost got my neck bit off by a German shepherd, a white dog or something. So I was unable to go into the backyard, but was able to see enough to make a reasonably good assessment of what was going on. As far as the second story sill plate heights, I think it makes totally good sense to do what he has done as far as reducing the general part and then have the back master bedroom be a little bit higher. That doesn't really affect anyone. I mean, he's looking out over his ADU, an apartment complex, and then a commercial building across the street. So that, you know, I can see he could, could fall in line with, given the uniqueness of the particular property. You know, going to his other comments about the commercial building across, but I mean, we all know it's, it's different jurisdictions kind of guiding it. And that's based on the zoning and all that and I don't need to go into further discussion on that. It looks like to me, when I was on the property, that his particular property is a few feet higher, well, not a few feet, but is higher than the property immediately to the left, which would give a little bit more credence to, if it was a ten or eleven-foot first story plate height, that would just exacerbate that look of it being a much larger thing. I don't know if nine feet is the issue or is the answer nine and a half feet. I kind of like Jude's answer of nine and a half feet and then maybe throw a couple inches or whatever in the second story for the remainder of the house excluding the master bedroom to give that a little bit more height and still, you know, make the inside, you know, because we don't want to build it inside out. But it will give the inside a little bit more volume, given that it's a contemporary home. I mean, the home itself, I think, is, is a very attractively designed house that would fit in there. So I'm, I'm in favor of probably approving it again with a couple of minor tweaks that I think Sean could be done here tonight versus sending it back for another round of making the things go. So those are my comments. Do we have anything, future from any of the other commissioners again? Or do I have a motion? I'm looking for a commissioner motion. I'll go ahead and ask Jude if he might have a commissioner motion.
I don't want to be the motion maker on everything, but, but once again, I think it's, I will make a motion. Getting back to numbers here, I will make a motion that we approve item SC twenty-one dash zero, 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 nine per the findings and conditions in the staff report with the additional condition that the first floor plate height be reduced to nine feet, six inches in height. And the seven foot eleven plate height on the second story be allowed to increase to a height that is still compliant with the daylight plane if it matches the other plate height in the, on the second story.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Let's take a vote. Commissioner Kuric?
Aye.
Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus? I as well agree with that. So we have an approval four to zero with those two conditions added to the dotted, I guess. And Sean, you have all those in line? You're clear?
Yes, I do. Yeah, with the condition to raise the, reduce the floor plate, the first story to nine feet, six inches, the seven foot plate height, seven foot eleven inch plate height to be allowed to increase, but still compliant with the daylight plane.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to sheet here. Item number four, SC twenty-one dash zero, zero, four, five, the property at twelve sixty-nine St. Mark's Court. Sean, will you give us the staff report, please?
Yes, I'm trying to. One second, sorry. There we go. Okay. Get the right screen. Good, good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. The project before you is a design review application for a six hundred and nineteen square foot addition to the first story with new windows located at the second story and architectural design exterior modifications to, to, to an existing two-story residence. This slide provides a rendering of the front elevation of the structure at, for the subject site. The subject site is located on north side of St. Mark's Court at the intersection of Woodview Terrace. This provides a neighborhood context map and also provides a a street elevation of the main, of the house with modification to the facade and the two neighboring properties at the lower level of sheet A zero, two. The existing house is not conforming along the front yard since the existing setback is twenty-four feet, two inches, twenty-four point two feet, where a twenty-five foot setback is required in the R one, ten district. However, the applicant is not proposing to modify more than fifty percent or more of the floor area and therefore is permitted to retain the existing non-conforming structure. The applicant again requests six hundred and nineteen square feet for an addition to the first story. This includes converting the enclosed attached covered porch along the front. This is located here in red, adding a new unenclosed attached porch with columns, which is here in blue in the front with the columns listed here. Adding new flare floor area along the right elevation to expand a bedroom number one and family room. So along the right side of the structure and then add a new floor area along the rear elevation to expand the family room, kitchen and dining room along the rear of elevation. The applicant does propose to add new, and we can try to go to that, add new gables to the, to the second story along the front elevation, replace doors, window stores and garage doors, replace existing windows along the rear with the bay window and add a new second story window along the left elevation. Again, this provides an example of the, this provides a floor plan. It highlights the area of the first story addition along the front and along the right side and rear. This provides the proposed dormer gables that are being proposed along the front elevation that are modifying the front elevation of the structure. It does reflect a change to a more board and batten vertical siding with a standing steel seam metal roof, which is a change from the original material. They are adding a, the primary reason the project is before the commission is due to the addition of this one new window along the left west elevation. Typically, single-story homes are reviewed administratively by staff and the first story additions are administrative reviewed additions to a home. However, the applicant's addition of a new window on the left side at the second story requires designer view commission approval. The applicant's window is proposed with a sill, a window sill height of eleven feet, seven inches, which staff does believe eliminates any potential impacts in regards to privacy to neighboring properties since it does exceed the typical standard of four feet, eight inches. I should note also along the rear elevation, they are proposing a bay window. Staff does believe that the windows, you know, the two adjacent windows are replacing windows of a similar size and a similar location. The windows are not resulting in significant alterations to the overall sill heights of the windows that are increasing the overall privacy impacts greater than the existing privacy impacts from the windows that are located in similar locations. Therefore, staff does not believe there are additional privacy impacts along the rear elevations. The applicant, you know, did provide a tree protection plan that lists all the trees proposed for removal and that's provided in sheet one. A landscape plan is included in L sheet, on sheet L two point one. It includes adding variety of shrubs and ground cover and other plantings along the front and partially on the side yard with the retention of the, of the lawn in the rear yard. Overall, the staff does believe that the proposed landscaping meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations and staff does recommend approval of the proposed project. Thank you. Staff is available for any comments and the applicant is also available for any questions and for their presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have a question for Sean.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ma.
Sean, just out of curiosity, what's that open space behind this property? Is there park or is it private?
I did not, I can always look it up. I do not know. I can check right now. It just takes a quick moment for me to pull it up and look.
I believe it's a private residence, but I could be incorrect.
I can look it up very quickly. This takes a moment. Sorry. We can find out who owns that. One second. And we could find out who owns that. One second. That is directly behind it is a well, I think I'm wrong. One second. Directly behind it is part of a plan unit development. So that is open space area directly behind a multifamily development project. Yeah, if the commission would like to see, I can show you the screen. So this is 1269 St. Mark's, and so this is the open space behind it, and then directly behind are all the multifamily developments.
I see. So this their their open space yards or or park. Okay.
Yes, this, yes, I don't know what specific uses, but it is it is currently open space and it's improved with landscaping.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
So Sean, same same, is that area that's a meadow looking now, is that a developable? Will there, could there be structures on that property, on that part of the parcel?
I couldn't answer that. I didn't. I would have to look at the plan unit development to see if it's permissible. A modification to a plan unit development would require that the project returns to the planning commission and to the city council for the addition of any projects in that area. So if there was a proposal, it would be for be before the PC and council.
Okay.
We are not aware of any proposals to modify that area.
We haven't been checking ex parte with anybody on projects, but I did have a conversation with the owner who saw me on the on the video when I was trying to get into the backyard and couldn't. And he came over and opened up the back. So I just wanted to say that I had had that conversation with the owner.
Yeah, that's Toyon Farms PUD development. Any other questions for staff? Okay, let's go ahead and go to the applicant. If you or your architect wants to make some comments, you have 10 minutes.
Hi, I'm the project architect Shen. Thank you, Sean, for the detailed analysis and presentation, and thank you, commissioners. I would like to first tell him everyone that owner had started the outreach meeting in November. They went door to door to deliver their letter and design intent and have the outreach meeting in November. There's no concerns. The only question they have is where, when will the construction start? That's the only feedback or question they they got. And as Sean mentioned, I think the only reason that this project is in this two-story review meeting is because of the second floor story, second floor windows. And as Sean explained, the only new window on the left is above a stairwell window that's almost 13 feet above the finished floor height. And regarding the rear bay window, it has the red view to the back, which is an open space. The bay window has no side opening, so it's only looking at the back. And the setback from the addition to the property is more than 40, 56 feet. So it's really far away. The second floor is further setback from the first floor. Just want to emphasize the privacy concern, and this is really a minor one-story addition. And we don't believe there will be negative impact to the neighbors.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
No question. No questions.
No question.
Okay, I don't have any as well. Sean, do we have any public comment in regards to this project?
No, we do not.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on into commissioner discussion. Commissioner Ma, would you like to start off?
Okay, yeah, it looks like a pretty straightforward project to me. The new window on the left side, that's the which triggered this project coming to commission. I see this window is in the stairwell and that that it's it's not any line of sight from that the user, it's in the in the in the upper high ceiling area. Yeah, so I I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Harding?
I also am in favor of the project.
Commissioner Kirik?
Same thoughts. Yeah, I think it's just some of the guidelines and very straightforward and an improvement to what's there.
And I as well support the project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, you cert from Jude. I make a motion that we approve SC 21-00451269 St. Mark's Court for the findings and conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Commissioner Turick.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
Commissioner Ma.
Hi.
And I, as Commissioner Blockus, also say aye. So congratulations for the vote was four to zero in support of the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is commissioner reports and comments. Do we have any?
Yeah, I do. For Sean, I've had a couple of ex parte conversations with friends and neighbors about projects that we've had before us that have been denied. And they, the people asking me, are wondering what the status is of those projects. I know that we talked about SB 9, you know, couple of last meeting. But is there, do do we as a commission have the ability to be updated on projects that have been before us and that are, let's just say, in suspension? As far as at least me personally and as our commission, do we have the ability to know that?
Sean, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. I realize. I'm sorry. Yes, of course, the information is public information. It's, you know, if the commission has a question regarding a particular project, we're happy to respond to their question and give update or status. If this is in particular to 41 Marvin, which I think is a project that was before you, the application is currently like in suspension, potentially it may return, but there currently is an SB 9 application that's been received by the city in
Okay.
On January.
So that would mean that we would not see it again.
Potentially. The project would have to meet the objective standards for SB 9, and for some reason it does not. Then they would have to return back to you.
And then the second, Coronado.
108 Coronado, if the city has not received an SB 9, we've only received, I believe, one SB 9 application. We have not received any SB 9 for 108 Coronado. 120, I believe, is attempting to modify their project to come back to DRC. I'm not aware of them pursuing SB 9 yet. They haven't told me.
So did you just say that there's only been one SB 9 project?
My understanding, yes, so far, yes. Lots of questions and lots of inquiries from the public. Every day, we receive dozens and dozens of questions about SB 9.
Thank you.
Sean, I actually have a follow-up to that question. So we've had numerous where we had sent them back for revisions and we, you know, similar to what Commissioner Harding had said, we haven't heard back. And he's had conversations with people about, is there, and maybe this is for the city attorney, is there a we should not talk about these projects to the general public or people who ask us? Or what is the protocol in regards to those that may or may not actually come back to us?
Yeah, that was actually part of my question, too. Do we have, are are we out of our bounds by asking these questions?
Well, I mean, you're not able to provide, to have a discussion regarding an item that's not on an agenda or or to provide opinions or make decisions on it. It's a minister SB 9s or ministerial projects. Ministerial projects do not require any discretion or independent judgment. As long as they meet the objective standards, they're approved. And there is no right to to a public hearing, though they can be appealed. And I would have to check back in, and I need us here on the final appealing body. I know the discussion, and I have to look at the code to get back to on that. Previously, it was council, but there may be an interceding body, and I have to look to see.
Yeah, but Sean, my question's more, let's say, a project came up six months ago that had DRC recommended changes to it. It sort of has stalled. They haven't done anything. Are commissioners allowed to discuss at a cocktail party or whatever? What the project was or whatnot? We don't know whether it's coming back or not, or is it better for us just not to talk about anything that we do?
Well, I mean, if 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 I can talk to the city attorney and get direction for you on that. Typically, if you have items that are being considered by the designer view commission, then those, then the discussion should occur within the commission itself. If you are speaking or having ex parte discussions with anybody regarding a project, then you will need to advise the commission when you're discussing them.
Okay, and that's even if we don't know that it actually is coming back or not. It's sort of what is in the DRC commission meeting stays in the DRC commission meeting.
And you can always inquire. We do have significant numbers of projects that come through the DRC and then go stagnant. And 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 I, and we all as staff members reach out to them every month or so to find out what's going on. So if you have particular projects you'd like to know about on status, we're more than happy to collect the status of those projects and convey them to you, whether they're still complete, incomplete, and if a project stays stagnant for more than six months under the zoning code, they will be closed as applications. So they can only stay in a position where they're not active for a six-month period maximum typically.
So the best best situation is anything that we have that gets sent out, we don't discuss it in the general public until we know definitely it's been removed or gone to SB 9 or whatever. We just basically best best standard of care is don't talk about anything that happens within the DRC except in front of the DRC in the meeting.
I mean, I mean, the recommendation is when at a public meeting, you are you're supposed to come in with an open mind in regards to being able to take in public comment, to be able to listen to the members of the commission and and not have an informed decision in advance of the meeting. So I think if you were speaking about it publicly, there could be a perception that maybe you were creating an informed decision in advance of a meeting. So it's probably better to be careful when speaking publicly. We can always reach to the city, contact the city attorney and get specific direction from them. And we can always do that for you, and we can convey that back to the next meeting.
But going back to the email that I exchanged with you about Coronado, so was that, was that within or not within appropriate inquiry?
That is, that is appropriate. That's fine. There's nothing, any member of the public can contact us and ask us the status, and it happens all the time. All the surrounding neighbors have contacted us about Coronado.
Yes.
Hey, Sean, is there an SB 9 hotline number?
I hope not. I wouldn't want to be on it.
I think Michael's volunteering to answer those questions. Actually, on a serious note, the recommendations that Michael and I provided to staff and the council and the planning commission, those were kind of placeholders for now, right, to get something in the books. Are the administrative standards going to evolve? Will there be another look at this as the months and years go by?
Yes. Yeah, this, that was just the SB 9 standards that were developed were just the initial you know, regulations that were developed because we were trying to meet particular timelines, so they would be in effect as of January 1st. There there will be additional meetings and discussions with council, and it will be updated.
Great.
I think as we are talking to applicants and learning more about SB 9 and how they're approaching potential projects, I think staff will have a lot of potential input in regards how we're seeing architects and the public approaching them to improve those standards.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commissioner reports, comments? Sean, potential future agenda items?
Um, not currently. We do, we do have a series of projects that will be coming forward at the next meeting. The subsequent meeting after the next one. So we do have an item, a series of items on the 16th. Currently, the first meeting in March, we do not have items yet, but that may change. If we do ever not have an item, then I'll reach out to Chair Blockus to advise them if it's necessary to cancel a meeting.
Also, Sean, for the two meetings in March, I will not be here. I will be absent.
Okay, that's noted.
Okay, I think we're, any last comments?
No.
Okay. It's 9:08. Let's go ahead and adjourn, and everyone have a good evening in a good couple of weeks.